All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Mashpee School Committee meeting of February 6, 2019. I called the regular meeting to order at 5:17 PM. And the first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I have a harder time standing out. My feet don't reach the floor.
And next we will be going into executive session to negotiate strategies for negotiation with Unit C. And for that, I will need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we go into executive session to return to open meeting at the conclusion of the executive session for the purposes of discussing items that need to be discussed during the executive session.
I second that motion.
Thank you.
You need to clarify in the motion what exactly
It's right here.
we're doing.
Strategy, oh, that we're going to be discussing strategies for negotiation with Unit C. I amend my motion to include that.
Thank you, George. So, a motion by George.
And I second.
Second by Nicole.
Glad you joined us.
Don?
Yes.
What do you mean? I'm right on time.
Nicole?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes. All right, thank you. All right, thank you. Welcome back. Also, with the executive session moved back into public. So, next on the agenda, we have recognition of Mary Jane Marks.
Wait, did we move to go back in?
Yes, we did.
We did, didn't we?
We voted.
No, we went into recess.
No, we voted to, we voted to close the executive session and enter into open session, and then we voted to have a recess.
Right.
Now, the recess is closed. Now, we're in an open meeting. I hope I can use your.
I had recused myself, so I just wanted to make sure we're good.
Yeah. We are back.
Thank you.
We never stood for the Pledge of Allegiance?
We did.
Oh, before I came here, okay.
All right.
We were on time.
Thank you. Yes, and I believe Patty has something she'd like to read.
Oh, say, oh, say. MJ, if you would like to just come up, we want to recognize it. First, I'm going to read something about Mary Jane Marks. This is to acknowledge the heroic, heroic actions of Mary Jane Marks. On January 15th, when, on January 15th, she assisted a student who was choking at lunch in the cafeteria at the Coombs School. Her quick, calm, and effective actions resulted in the student being correctly and effectively assisted during this medical emergency. She stayed with the student and communicated and collaborated with the nurse to ensure all of the details were shared with her, the administration, and the parent. MJ also reassured and supported the student post-event, which helped keep him calm while awaiting further medical evaluation. So, we just want to acknowledge what a fabulous employee and caring employee and skilled employee that you are to do that for our student.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have a little, yes, place up? You may ask.
Oh, wait, the thingy on?
I just wanted to say, first of all, thank you. It's quite an honor to be recognized for doing my job. And, but, I really couldn't have done my job as effectively as I did that day without the training that I get every year and truly every day from our nursing staff. So, just wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All the old hide the flowers between the chair trick.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Make it level.
Thank you.
Lucky to have you.
Absolutely. Incredible.
And thank you, Nurse Stacy, for coming as well.
All right, next, we have the approval of the minutes from January 2nd, 2019, and January, or, January 16th, 2019. So, I will need a motion for each individual, please.
Move to approve the meeting minutes of January 2nd.
Motion by George. You're a second?
I second.
Second by Nicole. Any comments or discussion? Are you none? Don, how do you vote?
I abstain.
Yes.
Yes.
And yes?
Move to approve the minutes of the meeting of January 16th.
Motion by George to approve. You have a second?
I second.
Second by Nicole. Comments? Discussion? Don?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. All right, next, we'll move on to the homeroom assignments for school year 1920. And I'm going to turn this over to
Very exciting news here.
Turn this over to Superintendent DeBoer.
When I read this packet, I was jarred into, yes, I was very, I thought, oh, God, this is going to cause so many problems.
So, in the packet is a memo from
In my house.
Principal LaBelle and Principal O'Brien. It is a recommended change in our practice that I also support. They are requesting and recommending that for school year 1920, next year, that the homeroom teacher assignment will not be placed on the student's report card in June, that all families will be notified in August. Did you have a date in here? Second week of August.
We thought it was the second day or
Second week in August is when families will be notified as to who their child's teacher is. Couple of the reasons has to do with the variability during the summer. There are often many families and children that move out of town and many that move in. It's also based on not being able to access the most current student performance data when, if classes are sort of formed in the May timeframe, when the end of the year benchmark is in June. And so, this is the recommended change. They will communicate it well to families all throughout the rest of this school year, so there will not be surprises. And there was just a little information at the bottom as to what other towns around us do as well. So, that was, this is sort of basically an FYI as to a change in practice.
So, is the communication going to be similar to sandwich that's done primarily through email, or is it going to be a combination of email and, and letters?
I think we need to consult with Sean Maroney regarding our availability of Power School because that's scheduled. The high school currently does notify families of their schedules in August, and we'll just have to check on that in terms of the elementary act of Power School.
Since a lot of parents at Coombs don't have access to Portland, frankly, like the other great schools, it might have to be a direct mail from Power Level. It would be difficult.
So, it might be some combination of email and letters and, okay.
Any other questions on it?
Thank you.
Don, looks like he has one coming.
How is this going to be communicated
Thank you, Dr. Curly.
to the parents currently?
So, what I'm suggesting that both Principal O'Brien and Principal LaBelle do a weekly blog, both of them do a blog. It will be in there as well. I'll be putting it into anything I send out, so we can put it on the website. We can put it as many places as we can find to make sure that everybody knows.
And I guess to Mr. LaBelle's point that some people on the KC Coombs don't read their emails, then you're going to also send it home with the kids?
Sure.
Okay. Yeah, I think both schools could have a hard copy type of a flyer that goes home so that we haven't missed any method.
And then, it might also be a good idea, since most parents are expecting it in the report cards at the, at the end of the year, maybe put a reminder in the report card at the end of the year.
We have to return two as well.
Yeah.
That would be a great suggestion.
And I think it's also important to
Sorry.
let the children know, too. I mean, it is, they, they're the ones that carry it. Those report cards are ripped home, ripped open before they even get home at the end of school, so they can see who they're paired up with. So, I think just clarifying that they're not going to get that information this year is probably even more important.
So, we don't need a vote on that or anything?
No. More of an operational piece.
That's FYI.
All right, next, we have a public comment, which, there is no public comment. Thank you, Kathy. So, we'll move on to the report of the superintendent. Superintendent DeBoer?
So, in your packet, you have the reports from each of the principals at the Coombs School, 404 students. He, Principal LaBelle, would like to thank the Coast Guard for their visits to the grade two classrooms, and MMHS teacher Amanda Howe and her students who visited the grade one students during STEM Week, and they're continuing to work on the golf course project, which is a recess item eventually. And then, also to thank the Mashpee-Wampanoag Tribal Council for inviting the staff to tour the building, which their tour was in January. There was a really great Math Around the World Night held recently. I don't remember the date exactly, but it was a Thursday. That's my, anyway. About over 300,000, 300,000, I need help with my math. Over 300 people were in attendance, and it was a very, very stormy night. So, we were very appreciative of everyone who ventured out in that rainy weather. At least, it wasn't snow, however. And one point to, this math night was geared towards combining learning about countries and culture with math and also with literacy. So, it was pretty, it was pretty engaging for the families. Twenty-five staff members participated. Three families also hosted one of the country tables, and five students from the Math Honor Society at MMHS participated, and the Mashpee-Wampanoag Tribe also participated. And a shout-out to first-grade teacher Stephanie Souza, because she was the main coordinator of this as the math curriculum leader at that school. And just as a reminder for both schools, on Friday night is the basketball game where it's the parents and staff of Coombs versus the parents and staff at Quash at 6:00 PM. So, I believe we might have a member of the committee playing.
There better be more than one. I mean, you guys are playing, too, right? That's what I was told.
I've done it, been there, done that.
Can I ride on your shoulders?
Any questions on the Coombs report?
I did, I did have a question.
George can play on the Coombs team.
Chronic absenteeism, 22 percent. Any insight on that?
All I say is that
He's asking about absenteeism.
Because very high, that's the only thing I can attribute to that, knowing considering the activity in that area.
Okay. Thank you.
Staff is equally.
It hits staff equally, too?
Yeah.
Did you guys have any success in looking back at the previous year? You said you were going to go back and see if you could compare?
I think Christine Conley is still working on it, because when she came back with a number, that didn't seem to make sense either. So, we're trying to figure out, to make sure we're comparing everything the same. So, we will
And what's the number now? Nine days? What is it? Ten?
Tomorrow, is today one? No, Friday is the 100th day, so that would be 10 days.
Okay. So, as of this report, though, it would have been any student who'd missed nine or more days?
That's right, yeah.
Okay.
And I'm assuming you're taking extra steps as far as to try to mitigate the spread of whatever it is that's spreading around, right?
Well, don't, they have Nurse Stacy. You can't get better preventative medical advice there.
I think the interesting thing was that they were multiple, they were multiple, they weren't one kid out for two days. Long term, of course, Nurse Stacy's not going to let them back to their own paralympics or anything.
That's true. So, they're automatically out for two days?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
I thought we were vacation coming. Hopefully, that'll help settle things down.
Unless people take a week ahead of it for vacation.
Okay, we have the report of the Quashnet School with Principal O'Brien here, 504 students. Principal O'Brien would like to acknowledge the Quashnet K kids under the leadership of Mrs. Ristalis and Mrs. McKay, who planned multiple activities for Kindness Week at Quashnet School, which I think was the last week of the month, 20, anyway, in the overlapping of the 23rd there. Students participated in a food drive and wrote gratitude notes to each other as well as to staff members. The Quashnet School PTO sponsored Tony Memmel, a musician who performed for each grade level during Kindness Week, and he brought a message of acceptance, perseverance, and the importance of having a growth mindset. In January, there were also 24 students inducted into the National Elementary Honor Society at Quash. And then, there were two music concerts. The January 10th Choral Concert from Quashnet Students was actually held in the MMHS auditorium, which was really a nice treat. They sounded wonderful, and that supposedly is going to happen next year. And then, on January 17th, was the Band and String Ensemble, which is a widely attended event. The gymnasium is filled, and it's really a wonderful event.
Before you leave that, because I'm a parent of a fourth grader, fourth grade musician, and I know, I remember Mrs. McKay, she always seems to be at those events, but it was, stood out to me this year that both of, because Carmen's in a co-teaching classroom, it was a really big deal to the kids that their teachers came, and they sat together at the concert, and it was like a celebrity sighting. The kids were almost distracted, to the point of not being able to perform, because they saw, you know, their fourth-grade teachers there. So, I just wanted to say that that was really special of them to do, and I know that's their personal time that they take out to do that. And I just think it's a great model, because it's, the kids seeing their teachers care about their outside-school activities as, as good as their parents coming. I mean, frankly, I think they were more excited.
My fourth-grade cellist stood on his chair to wave to his two teachers. He was so excited.
Right. So, anyway, so, please, I thank them, but I just wanted to say it was a really great, great idea.
Any other questions on that report? Then, we have the report of Principal Balistrachi at Mashpee Middle High School, and he's ill tonight as we speak about people getting ill. His, his family is all ill as well. So, there are 720 students at his school, 254 in the middle school, and 466 in high school. And we did have a very successful first annual MMHS Science Fair, and it was the same night that we also had the Soup for the Soul fundraiser, which raised $1,000 for the Chris Perkins Family Scholarship. And thank you to Deb Troyanos and Chef Will Stalosky for facilitating that. And there were, I think it was 23 judges. I have it in the article going in the enterprise thanking the judges that came and participated in the science fair. It was a really important added piece that students could explain their thinking and have that kind of feedback from judges. Also, congratulations to the robotics team for their strong showing at the VEX Robotics Competition. It has a little highlight in there about the dual enrollment program that is available through Mass Maritime and also Cape Cod Community. Cape Cod Community has a broader range of course offerings. Mass Maritime, I think, had three or four, that I, like, one each semester.
Yeah, I was surprised to learn of this. I mean, I think I had kind of heard about it, but why would a ninth grader take a English composition course in a college level? Is it because they're just, we don't offer anything that accelerated enough for that individual, or is it?
Well, it wouldn't necessarily, he can't, there is, I think there's AP English, no, there's not AP English in, for, in ninth grade, but he's probably in the honors section. I think he's, he's, no, I know this child, and so, he is kind of very focused on a positive future for himself. And
So, it's more just like he was trying to get college credit because he could fit it in?
He likes to challenge himself.
That's really
So, I gave him kudos, because if he does that all four years, he'll be pretty well off.
Save his parents about 25 grand.
Any questions on that? Okay, then, you have the report of Special Education Director, Dr. Curly, and you'll see we have 270 students on IEPs. I just wanted to sort of branch out and speak a little about, about the Angst, Raising Awareness Around Anxiety Documentary. We did show it Monday night to, George was there, thank you, to families, and they could bring their child with them. I think we estimated about 40 people were there. And that was, under that arrangement, we had two more opportunities to stream it. And so, after having viewed it, we really feel it was something that all of our middle high school students should watch. So, tomorrow, this is Wednesday, tomorrow, our 10th, 11th, and 12th graders and all of their teachers will be viewing the film. And then, on Friday, all of the 7th, 8th, and 9th graders and their teachers will, so we'll have gotten every staff member and every student to view the film. I did notify families today about that, and I think I only had one question from a parent about would she be able to access the documentary outside? And I said no, but she was welcome to come to either one of those days. It was excellent, I think.
I was just curious, how many people attended the January 30th CPAC meeting? Four? Wow, that's 100 percent more than I thought. I pegged it at two.
Are they sitting on chairs, or are they standing?
They're sitting on chairs. They're sitting on the high
Chairs that I should have here. Except I couldn't get into the chair without a ladder.
Okay, so, are we ready to go to the athletic report?
Yes.
So, we have Athletic Director Matt Trivari's report, and to highlight, the athletic department helped to raise $1,510 for the Chris Perkins Legacy Fund through donations at the January 25th Boys Basketball Game. And then, the Mashpee-Montemoy Hockey Team also raised money for the same scholarship fund. Junior Ashley Kelleher and 8th grader Amaya Peters are two of the top five scorers in the South Shore League in girls' basketball. Senior Devon Ford is second in scoring in the South Shore League in boys' basketball. And today, I was happy to partake in this. Senior Xavier Gonzalez signed his national letter of intent to play football at UMass Amherst. And that was a very nice ceremony.
Yes. Congrats.
So, Personnel Report shows the addition of Donna Kessner. She's a recess monitor at the Coombs School. Maureen Goldsmith is the new Executive Administrative Assistant in the High School Guidance Office. She transferred from the middle school guidance office. And the departures are Linda Catalina, who retired out of the High School Guidance Office, and Jackie Capute, who was a special education teacher. She retired on the high school side. Any questions? No. So, this enrollment, I, you have a new one sitting there that has the October 17 members on it. We already went over what each school currently has for a total of 1628. Anybody have questions on that?
1628. No. These numbers look different from the numbers that
From Desi?
No, from the numbers that were sent to me by Gail.
Well, the first chart she gave you, I then looked to confirm, and they were revised.
Okay.
This matches Desi.
Okay. I'm sorry.
She was taking numbers off of the report from October of that year,
Okay.
which never matches, so I'm like, no, these all match with Desi.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was going to say, didn't look familiar.
Throw the other one away.
So, we're actually up over last year. Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
Anything else? No.
So, next on the agenda is the Portrait of a Graduate update. You don't have a handout about this. I was just going to let you know that we had our first working group, not working group, school committee, but working group of Portrait of a Graduate on last Friday, February 1st. We had 20 people in attendance. Two people who were planning to come were not able to come that day. We have one middle, one high school senior as part of the team, and we're going to add additional students for the next meeting, which is on March 8. But it was a pretty, I thought it was a good meeting. We tried to shift our mindsets a little bit. Okay?
It was a great meeting. It was really, it was a great group of people, and I learned a lot, and it was really fun to, it's really fun to be sort of reimagining what you kind of know to be sort of the accepted standards and, and just way of teaching, and I think I'm glad that I work in a district where we have a superintendent who's willing to kind of look at, you know, sort of breaking with tradition a bit and sort of trying to move forward with kind of what we know our students need in the future. So, I think it's going to be great. Happy to be participating in it.
Glad you are participating. Next in the packet is an update, and I don't know whether you read through it. I just wanted to give you a mid-year sort of update on my own action steps, my goals. And so, the action steps are listed for each, I have two goals, broad goals. And I don't know if you have any questions on anything that you might have read in the packet. The first page is just our current broader district three goals. And then, if anybody has any questions?
I might later. I didn't have a chance to look at this.
Okay. Yeah, so if you have anything, shoot me.
The only question I had was references informal feedback.
Right.
But you all, that's in addition, then, to the formal observations you do, correct?
So, I do, I do all of the principals, Dr. Hansken and Dr. Curly, but in terms of teachers, when I go in classrooms, I don't do anything formal. I will send emails giving them some feedback. Sometimes, I leave them a sticky, things like that.
Okay, so that doesn't go into teach point?
No. No, they, they probably want me to come on.
Okay.
No, I'm not an evaluator for any of them.
All right.
So, if anybody has any further comments or questions, I'll just email Patty directly and
Yeah.
get feedback on that. All set.
Next for you to read as well is to, kudos to one of our Directors of Instructional Technology, Suzie Brooks, for this published article about tech and anxiety. And it appeared in the Tech Learning publication. And I just want to give a shout-out to both of our Directors of Instructional Technology, Suzie Brooks and Colleen Terrell. We are so grateful for all the learning that they bring back to the district, for their willingness to model, to take someone who's at, you know, a step one as far as they need to go, or someone that's much more advanced to where, where they can continue to grow, where they were both teachers, that type of insight is really helpful. So, this is a pretty interesting article and feeds right in with what seems to be the focus of this, this anxiety.
Just want to add to that really quickly. So, with my interactions with them, my experience working with them over the last few years, they've come a long way, and their, their, like, thirst for knowledge on this stuff is incredible. Like, they never stop. They're always wanting more information. They're excited about it. They're always looking, you know, what the next step is. So, I really give them a lot of credit, and I, and I'm glad we have them in our district and, you know, thank you for everything they do.
And next is a smaller version of the bigger poster. All of the kids were, received this contest, anti-vaping poster contest. It's a collaboration between the schools, the Mashpee Substance Use Task Force, and the Kiwanis Club of Mashpee. And so, we're hoping to get some pretty interesting contributions. I did ask at the high school that when, if they could announce it on a regular basis, they do the morning, like, little blip of announcements, and I really wanted certain students to promote it, who are viewed as sort of the cool kids, because I do have a concern that some kids will choose not to participate because they, they're worried about what their peers think. And so, we want to try to break through that. But we're super excited about it.
It's all grades.
All grades. I have one, a couple that maybe you don't have, but I'm going to read this one. This came from Chris Perkins's sister, and it was addressed to myself and the staff. "We cannot thank you enough for all the support. You, your staff, and the whole Mashpee community have provided our family as we mourn the loss of Chris. You all reached out in so many ways. I'm not sure I can count them all, but we will never forget the home Mashpee provided for Chris and the family. You've all become to us. So far, we have dedicated a third of the money raised for Chris's legacy fund to a scholarship. The amount is $4,130." She's asking for guidance to move forward to decide how to administer, which we have that at the high school. "We look forward to keeping Chris's memory alive by supporting a Mashpee student. People like you make the world a better place and give us comfort during the sad time." So, that was nice of you.
Thank you.
And then, in the packet, I also wanted to read, Roxanne Brown could not be here today. She's from the Mash, Mashpee-Wampanoag Education Department, but she wrote this email to us or to our little team that went. "It was extremely uplifting to have you in attendance on Friday night. That was January 25th at their open house. Your presence at the MWT Education Open House underscores the commitment of the Mashpee Public School District to work with the tribe. It was great to see Hope, Mark, and Mary Kate." It was great to see Hope, Mark, and Mary Kate as well. It presented a huge gesture that you would take the time, after a full week of work, to spend some time with us. I have heard from some of the community who were in attendance, and they really appreciated having you there. We look forward to a productive, ongoing relationship with the Mashpee School District." And the last correspondence is a letter we're sending, or we sent to Sheriff Cummings. "I would like to thank Sheriff, Chief Deputy of Technical Services Ralph Swenson, Deputy Sean Cahill, and the entire Barnstable County Sheriff's Department for the donation of 6 2-way emergency radios to the Mashpee Public Schools. After a recent school evacuation due to a natural gas leak, we realized that better communication was needed to improve safety. Deputy Cahill and Chief Deputy Swenson responded with a donation of radios and also with a training for school and district personnel. We are grateful for the positive partnership we have with the Barnstable County Sheriff's Office. Your support of the Mashpee students, staff, and families is greatly valued." So we now have the radios. We have 1, middle school, high school offices have 1, and Quash and Coombs. And it allows us to be connected directly and monitor the police and the fire. And so it's not meant to be used except in an emergency, but it will be very helpful in making sure we respond and they know what's going on. They're very expensive radios, so we're grateful, grateful for that.
Good, thank you. Does anybody have anything for Patty?
No, thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to the report of the Business Manager, Mr. Funk.
Dawn Meyer's emailed me some questions, I'm gonna start with those. They're basically all part of the budget to actual FY, or it's labeled here, FY '19 Budget Update. I'll just read the questions, I'll respond to each of the questions, but if you have additional questions, talk in at any time. The first one, on page 33 in your packet, the employee insurance, this at one time was disability insurance and life insurance for certain personnel that are covered by non-union contracts. They received a life insurance policy as per their contract plus disability. Well, this particular year, this is the first year FY '19, the disability insurance is now coming, is part of their salary, so it's coming out of their salary. So this particular line item will show a balance at the end of the, probably at the end of the fiscal year. And where it's coming out of their salary, they're all different, they're at all different amounts. It's not just 1 straight amount. And we still take their life insurance policies off this line item. The second question was on the McKinney-Vento, and that was in the transportation.
Someone gets, is it page 34?
Page 34.
34.
Thank you. According to Dawn's notes, the order is question.
Right, 34, I'm sorry, I was looking below it. McKinney-Vento, looks like it's continuing increasing. Do we receive some relief from the state on the cost? And have kids increased this year? They have increased hugely this year. We had a tremendous influx of McKinney-Vento students. These are students that live outside of Mashpee, that we have to transport back into Mashpee because this is their home base, even though they have been displaced. The part of the question, yes, the state does reimburse, but it goes directly to the town. And the reason why it goes directly to the town is because they feel that the town has already given you the money upfront as part of your budget, so it goes back to the town. It has been at about 80%. Now, you know, I've increased it every year based on what we project. As you see, in 2018, the expenditure was $52,000. I increased it to $62,000, an extra 10%, but we're finding that the students are further out, you know. It's not like they're coming from the next community like Dennis or Barnstable. It's New Bedford, Fall River, Boston. So that has increased.
I guess I can follow the logic of, as long as it's positive, the refund going back to the town, but in cases where it's negative, that just causes a bigger issue for us.
Right, you're absolutely right. As far as the budgeting goes, as I said, I increased it by $10,000. I project the best I can. When we start building a budget, there's so much money, and, you know, I don't want to start cutting into personnel to subsidize McKinney-Vento transportation. But it could come down to that, that we're gonna need hundreds of thousands, over 100,000. We're up to, right now, we have encumbered $70,219.85. So that puts a $34,000 negative balance there. If I had to take this and look at it for next year, I'd be looking at over $100,000.
So have we, so does the town incorporate in their revenue stream the reimbursement?
The town accountant would project what you would get back.
So in their next year's budget, they have built into the revenue stream a certain amount of reimbursement?
Right. But that's an estimate too, that's an estimate, it's just like the Medicaid reimbursement. Next question is on page 36, the Outreach Coordinator.
I'm sorry, while you're on that page.
Which page now?
34.
Oh yeah, there was a sped question on there.
Yeah.
We've had 2, we've had, just in the past month, I've had 2 new students, 1 at $18,600. Student lives out of district in a residential and is transported to a collaborative. Per that particular child is our responsibility for the transportation, and it's $150 a day. I had another student that is being, is coming home on weekends, residential, going back on Monday mornings. That's $100 a day. So again, these are not a little cost. We do the best we can based on what we have when we're building our budget as far as the transportation. But those just came, those are just 2 new ones. That's why the, Dawn, that's why the encumbrance went up.
Yeah.
Because we're trying to encumber it as much as we can so we don't get burnt at the end of the year. Outreach Coordinator, page 36. The Outreach Coordinator this year, and only this year, is in with the business clerk. Line item 15089, 5100201410. You'll notice it went from 130 to 177, $55. Next year, it'll be a separate line item, we've added that line item, we've added the salary number for that particular item, and so you'll see that completely separate in FY '20. High school team leaders, on page 38. On page 38, you'll notice, in high school, you'll notice line item 15113, $5116, $2315. It wasn't anything budgeted. What we did is we included that in their salaries. Department of Education does not want it to show it that way, they want it to take it out, they want you to, they want to show you, this is what we're paying, this is what you're paying per average for a teacher, and then these are the extras. So we did, we did have a line item in there, that's why it's in the negative. It will keep rolling in the negative. Let's see, team leaders, middle school retirements, we have $50,000 budgeted. I had something on retirements. We have budgeted, again, when we go, remember, this budget that we're looking at today was started in 2017, 2 years ago. So what we try to do is we try to look at what the faculties look like in each of the buildings as far as age goes. And we had budgeted for retirements and obligations at KCC, Quashnet, $10,000 each, $17,000 at the high school, $50,000 at the middle school, and sped, we budgeted $61,598. Right now, we're looking at a total of, that's a total of $148,598. We're looking at right now $199,411. Those will get paid out at the end of the year. High school substitute nurses, again, we try to budget without being a budget buster. I think at the high school, it was $2,100 was budgeted, and, let's see, what page is that on?
40.
I love Dawn.
It's on 40.
40.
Put those pages down. If you'd like to get right to that page. Page 40, if you see, it happens to be in negative $220. First of all, the nurses are in a different substitute category than the teachers, so they're in a higher category because of the, you just can't get nurses, so they're at a much higher rate. So their substitute money is gonna go rather rapidly. And, you know, I try to budget approximately 10 or 11 days, you know, so I guess I'm gonna have to budget more.
So one thing that sticks out to me on that line is that last year, we expended $4160, but we only have $2,100.
That particular nurse had surgery last year.
Okay.
That's right. She was out a month?
Few months.
Few months, so. But that's, that was the impact. Plus, you know, I also want to point out that I believe that the elementary schools, when they go on a field trip, they have to take a nurse officer, so that impacts this too.
This was at the high school.
Oh, right, right, and I'm just kind of looking down the road, you know, I might not get asked that question at the elementary level.
That's kind of a challenging topic also to discuss here because it's a single line item for sub for each school. We know who the person is, so that's kind of...
Yeah.
I don't feel comfortable with that too much, I guess.
Well, I already opened my mouth. Too late now, right, George?
I think the point that Chris...
Noted.
Right, but the answer still becomes personal.
Yeah.
Yeah, my question was just typically when you see something reached a certain level last year, you don't normally see that number decline by 50% the next year budgeted.
Especially from that person. You don't usually see that. You know, that's not the, that's not the trend.
Yeah.
High schools fed substitutes. Let's see, page 44. On that one, on page 44, we had a substitute, we had a sped teacher retire, and now we have a long-term sub. So the long-term sub gets charged to the substitute line, where there will be funds available on the special ed high school line.
But that particular situation, there's been a long-term sub in that position since September due to personal issues.
But why do we, why do we leave it, and we can take this offline, but I don't understand why we would leave it there because for the contract, they get paid at the teacher rate.
Yeah, but Desi doesn't care. They want to, they want to see, okay, you have a person in there from September all the way, because that person, just because they're in that position for the whole year does not mean that they own that position. So you've got the regular sped teachers, and then the long-term sped teachers. They want that separated out. Not only do they want it separated out, they want it separate from even the day-to-day subs. So they want to see now on the end-of-the-year report, you've got long-term subs and regular subs. I mean, I just...
Bureaucracy.
I'm just, it's been audited by Desi, I'm in good shape there, now it's going to the private auditors.
What constitutes a long-term sub? How many days or...
Usually, as soon as they, what's, 10 days.
10 days.
So that would be the long-term sub, so we would hit the long-term sub. And then I break them out at the end of the year. I don't, Alan does, Alan breaks them out at the end of the year, and I know which one's the long-term and which one's the day-to-day. Legal services, on page 46.
And obviously, you have to be careful on how you answer that.
No, I don't, I don't want to. So, in the past, again, based on past years, certain things, you know, I know I, certain things that are happening this year, we budget. And I kind of level budgeted that for the past, I don't know, 5 or 6 years. It's always been $42,000. I believe it's $42,000 for legal services.
Okay, so last year, we spent, last...
Right, we spent less, but this is a different year, and we're doing a lot more that we may need legal advice on.
That's fine, thank you.
School choice, this one, can you reflect on the FY '20 commitment to school choice funds in calculating the balance, balance of funds available?
So you want to hold off on that until you get to...
To what?
To your other sheet. It's, that goes with page 50. That particular question.
On page 50, I'll tie them both together, is that okay?
Well, I guess what Dawn's getting at is if you want to, any other questions to wrap up the actual budget piece and then the one revolving, and then, yeah. Which, I do not have any comments or questions, but if anybody else goes on the budget itself.
No.
Yeah, you want to go through the grants and that? Did you have anything else?
No, why don't I do this, and then we'll go on to the grants.
Okay.
On page 50, that's the 4-year plan, and Dawn stated that since we have used school choice funds to plug in the gap between the budget and the town appropriation, can you include in the '21 to '23 projection the school funds required each year? And the growth in expenses goes down from 12% to 8%, which it does in this, in our projection, versus declining under 4% in FY '23. And this is Dawn, which I don't think is realistic. Okay, that's his opinion.
That's my opinion.
It looks like we would need over $1 million of choice funds in FY '23 alone to sustain a 4% annual budget increase. I am attaching, I have his spreadsheet, which I won't pass out tonight. My feeling is, the most we can commit, you know, if I had to talk to the town manager or to you people right here, the most that I would commit on any year moving forward is $500,000, because that's basically what we get for school choice every year. Now, if there are funds left over, after we back out the $355,000, $411,000, that I can't tell you at this time, we're still in operations and so forth. As far as moving forward, I really don't want to pass these out until the working group has seen it and had a discussion on it. But the most that we can move out is, most is $500,000. So that would affect whatever the percentages are. And the reason why I say that is, we have here on this 4-year budget plan, we have FY '20, we have a 3.72% budget increase based on using $500... five hundred thirty-eight thousand eight hundred and sixty-five dollars in school choice money. We're now moving into FY twenty-twenty-one. We have not met with the principals yet. We have estimates in there that may go down, they may go up. I don't want, and whatever happens now, because we are working on twenty-twenty-one now, whatever is impacted there is gonna carry forward with the working group. So I really, I'll present your findings to the working group, we'll have a discussion on it, and maybe at a later date, we'll, you know, I'm sure we'll come back with, with an answer on that, but I'd like to table that at this time.
No, I just, that, that's fine, I just.
Yeah, okay, you gotta.
Spreadsheet noted.
Yes.
I, I was trying to address my concern.
Yeah, I, I got it, I got it, I got it. And I just don't feel comfortable without the working group seeing your, what your explanation is against what we've been working on.
No, and, and that's fine.
Okay.
Because I know this is a work in progress.
It certainly is.
Yes, your question.
Any other questions, other than Dawn's, the last thing I spoke on?
Good. Everybody else?
Any words?
Yeah.
All right, moving on. The revolving accounts listed in your, if anyone has any question on the revolving account balances? I see no questions, moving on to the school choice expenditures. We're gonna refine, we're, we're, again, I'll be presenting something to the working group for next year, refining this. I think what, what's working well this year is how we're waiting to the end of the year to back out against the choice money, the three hundred and fifty-five thousand four eleven, because there is a possibility that there will be money left there, and rather than turn it back to the town, we'll keep that in our conference.
I just noticed, if I look at the, the dates on your school choice expenditure for the November and December, I think that's the same number that you're showing as the difference between January and February?
Right, because I haven't got any revenue. I haven't got additional revenue.
Okay.
Well, you had six hundred and twenty-seven thousand eight, 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 three ninety. The expenditures going out are exactly the same.
Right, but in January, you told us we had eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand on your revolving report.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that's off.
Okay.
That's off. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, that's off.
That was my point.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And the last one, grants. The true figures on that, on the one that says choice sheet, just so you know.
Yeah.
Any questions on grants? I can remember when there were a lot more grants.
Is there anybody else? Any questions?
No further questions, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, good, so we have a.
No.
Hmm? Yeah, we probably should wanna vote on the budget transfer. Do you have a budget transfer question?
Yeah, I know for budget transfers, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, there isn't?
No.
There was one on the agenda.
There's one on the agenda.
I know, I, I use, I tell her to leave it on there in case.
In case you're down.
In case, in case, just in case you need one. All right.
Right, not in this month, there will be some.
Well, then we do not have any budget transfers then. Does anybody have any question on the four-year budget plan before we move on? Any other additional questions? Nope? All right. Well, then, thank you, Mr. Funk. If there are no objections, I wanna move Skylar Rimple up on the agenda so she can get back home and get ready for school tomorrow.
Okay, is this, it's just for the, no, she's fine.
Is it work?
Today happens to be the one-hundredth day of our school year, which is kind of exciting out of a hundred eighty. We had our midterm exams on the seventeenth, eighteenth, twenty-second, and twenty-third of January, so that means that the first semester has ended and we're into the second. So new classes are underway and new curriculums are developing. The school musical, the Putnam County Spelling Bee, has been rehearsing, getting their ensemble together, and they will perform at the end of next month. Last Saturday night was Dancing for a Cure led by Shayla Alves, and that was her senior project, as she's someone who's been doing dance for many years. It was a really strong community event, performances by many dance organizations, and she's very grateful for the volunteers, sponsors, and dancers. Students reading To Kill a Mockingbird in English classes are preparing to record podcasts of the court's trial scene to better understand the story. Cheerleading competitions on Sunday and Wednesday of next week are coming up, and they're hoping to qualify for upcoming competitions that follow. They're a fun, hard-working team, ready to show Mashpee's talent, and in the same way, the Varsity Girls Basketball Team has qualified for a state tournament for the first time since two thousand and twelve this season. And games for a tournament will kick off after vacation. They're a hard-working program with positive attitudes and positive work ethic. Robotics competitions have been taking off for their clubs and classes mixed together, and they had an energy carnival here at the Quashnet School last week that had volunteers from the high school robotics clubs and tech and engineering clubs go down and support them and lead them into learning more about energy. The Project Three Fifty-One Launch Day was on January nineteenth, and Hope Hanscom came with her son, and that was a really great opportunity for someone firsthand in the Mashpee community to really understand what it's like to be at Project Three Fifty-One. Our new ambassador is eighth grader Katrina Mayen, which she had a great time there, and I talked to her every day, and it's really fun just to have someone who does it with me now. It was at Faneuil Hall in Boston, and I served at Cradles to Crayons, and we did a toy sorts to make sure that all the donations were something that, once a kid received them, they would be really happy with them, and we attached batteries to things that would need them, and it was just a really well-thought-out process. We received messages from Robert Kraft that we are the champions, and as well as those from Governor Charlie Baker and his wife, Congresswoman Ayanna Pressley, Donetta Secosta, and Joanne Chang. The Pro Start Cooking Team at the high school for culinary is going to Gillette Stadium for a state competition on Tuesday. The school-to-career internships for the seniors have begun starting last week. The Science and Engineering Fair was at Mashpee High School, as well as the Soup for the Soul fundraiser. They were both on January fifteenth, and it was a great night for community involvement and exposure to the science and art programs. Over one thousand dollars was donated from the Soup for the Soul fundraiser, aided by Ms. Tryonos and her pottery class. And then for the Science and Engineering Fair, the three winning projects related to music, learning, and hoverboards. And those and about forty others will be heading to the regional competition in March at Bridgewater State University. There was the All Cape Music Festival last weekend at Barnstable High School, so singers, strings, and band musicians were celebrated together from all of Cape Cod. The, or actually, today is National Signing Day, so Xavier Gonzalez signed off today that he would be going to UMass Amherst to play football and be a student athlete up there. The Senior Center Valentine's Day Dance was last Friday night with many middle-high school volunteers, and it's just a great annual dance for families to enjoy the holiday. The Key Club at the high school is doing a drive for the homeless, so hats, gloves, and other warm clothing are needed as donations to help the homeless in this cold weather. And the Career Fair will be next week, next Wednesday, from seven-thirty to ten forty-five in the morning, so grades nine through twelve will come in and have community members, community professionals discuss their fields to the students in case they're interested. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lot of good things going on. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kyle.
Update on everything, not only in the schools, but in the community as well. Appreciate it. If you need to, you're, you're welcome to stay, but if you need to.
My dad's at Marshes.
We'll take your time, we're glad to have you.
My sister.
Move on to unassigned unfinished business, and we have the outreach working group update.
So in your packet, it was the final version of the survey that went out to families. The only difference between what you had previously seen was the addition of a question at the very end for all households, which was. What do our graduates need to know, do, and be like? So we're looking for some feedback there that will help us with our portrait of a graduate. And we have, so far, two hundred and thirty-four responses out of nine hundred and seventy-nine invitations that were sent. A reminder went out this past Friday, we'll probably have another one go out as well tomorrow, Friday.
What was the total again? I'm sorry.
Two hundred and thirty-four responses, two out of nine hundred and seventy-nine invitations that were sent. But then we will be able, we will be sending paper copies home to anyone who hasn't responded to the online. We did have a couple of people, when I sent the reminder a week ago, who communicated they never, prior to that, in my, in my weekly email, they emailed and said they had not received the first invitation, and I encouraged them to look in various folders and places. And then I said, well, let me know if you don't get the reminder one that, that next day, and two out of three did get the reminder. And so we'll keep trying on the other one, but eventually she will get a paper copy.
Yeah, we, one of the, we had a, I think before the last meeting, we'd had this focus group. And, and then we sent, when the survey was finalized, we sent it out to a few people, the electronic version, just to let them test it, and one of the parents said that she thought that we would get a much better response if we were able to text parents. And so I relayed that to Patty. It's, it's something that I've noticed, especially the last couple of years, when I sign my kids up for athletics, they have to, I'm always asked to let, know what cell company I'm with and authorize the use of texts to get information to me, to get alerts and things like that. And, you know, I think we just need to be a little, looking forward a little bit to know that, you know, email is, is becoming, like the Luddites are using email now, you know, because everybody is chewing everything over text and like social media, so. And, and there's a, I think we just need to look at that for next year, so Patty and I have talked about that, and also, you know, providing a, a survey link and maybe giving people an access code to access it so they could do it from anywhere, they don't have to necessarily have the email. We could put it somewhere else or something like that, so.
So one, one thing that, or we just discussed maybe in this group or another one is, something that I've brought up a couple times over the years, is a Mashpee-specific app that people can download and get push notifications on, so.
And we have a field that, Mary's, we found.
Yeah.
Could be actually.
Yeah. And it might even be a good project in-house, to have it created in-house for some of the tech students. Wouldn't be that difficult.
Yeah, she would give it a chance.
I wouldn't have, so.
Internship?
Yeah, so, just a, just a thing, just a thought.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Okay.
And then in your packet, the effective and efficiency working group.
This is great.
There is a draft of the.
Mess it up every time.
Committee handbook, and the target for this meeting was to look at pages twelve through twenty, but you have the entire book up here, so you could, you can check it, what's already in there. And I don't know if you had a chance to look through George, you're gonna have a lot of these, those requests, so it started on page twelve, is what we were gonna go with tonight, the subcommittees and the aides on the board of the years.
Were there any changes made based upon feedback from the last meeting or not?
No.
Okay.
We did go with changing it to you from the very first section, and.
No, I think the conversation was that the, this would be the first, and then you bring it back with your feedback and have a conversation.
Yeah, so the conversations that we had at all the meetings were going, moving forward, not looking back at previous sections. So any feedback that was given on previous sections was noted, but not actually any changes or anything made. That way we wanna get the entire thing out as a recommendation from the group, and then now that you have the entire thing with our recommendations, committee can look at it and then submit any changes for the entire handbook.
Okay.
If you look at page seventy-nine in the packet, which is page eighteen, you'll see the yellow.
Yeah.
So we, what you see is what we currently have in there, and then this is the boarding from policy, the EDF, so we need to somehow make sure we have it correctly written, and we left it to be something that's looked at here.
Okay.
This is specific to open meeting.
Which, speaking of, I'll remind you that, if you do have any remarks on this, just email it directly to Patty, unless you have anything that you wanna say during the meeting or next meeting or whatever. So that way we don't have any.
I, well, I noticed, not just in this section, but in the previous sections, and I, I didn't look at the new, I haven't had a chance to look at the new ones yet, but, you know, we do a lot of shoulds, shalls, and you'll be expected to, and all this stuff, but there's nothing in here that talks about the consequences of breaking any of those. Yeah, so I didn't know whether, is it, I don't frankly, thankfully know what happens, but, I mean, do we have like, and I can't remember from policy, I don't think, I recall anything from the policy manual, but is there a protocol for someone who violates some of these policies, or is there a censure?
I think it's more in the, so if you go to the, the actual school committee, like go to Mass website and look at all of those documentations, that's specifically to us, not necessarily in our policies, it talks about the Ethics Commission and how you report that, or, you know, obviously, there's no real direct, so if there was a member that was acting out of, out of order or not, kind of coercing with the group, which has never happened on this committee, we, there's not a whole law that the committee itself can do, obviously, because you're an elected official by the town, so if you're not breaking any ethics or open meeting laws or anything like that, you know.
Okay.
We kinda just have to.
It was just something, I, I was, there was just a lot of directives, and, and it was kinda, I kept thinking, or what, like, or.
Yeah.
Can we censure somebody? Can we, you know, and I don't think we can, right? Okay.
As long as you're acting ethically and, and not breaking any laws.
And so if you, and so if you weren't, then, because some of these are ethical.
Yes. Then there was ways, there was routes to go to the Ethics Commission and, and, you know, get somebody.
All right, well, thank you for doing this, I was very excited to read it, start to finish.
Good stuff.
Yeah. Would've been great to have two years ago.
The quicker the better.
So you want the feedback to go to you, or to who?
Patty.
Patty.
Patty, okay.
Going back to Nicole's question, something rings in the back of my head about missing meetings. If you miss a certain number of meetings as a member.
I don't know anything about that.
I don't know why that's ringing in my head, but.
You don't get reelected, I guess, if you, hopefully people say the tendency that you don't show up and.
You never know.
You don't get reelected.
Yeah. Couple of things that we've, we've not been doing in the open meeting procedures on page seventy-nine, the very top. Votes are taken by voice vote in general, and we have been going down the line on all of these, so that might be a period of discussion of exactly what we wanna do.
What do you mean by that, John? Just to clarify.
The second bullet on page seventy-nine.
Mm-hmm.
Open meeting, votes are taken by voice vote.
You're saying because we do roll, because we each vote?
Yeah, that, that, then you, any member can ask that a vote be taken by roll call. So we're doing a roll call as opposed to doing a voice vote.
God, we could be saving like ten minutes a meeting.
Yeah.
And that's the policy, is the one down below.
Where are you?
Votes of the school. Votes of the school committee, on the same yellow. Votes of the school committee will be taken by voice vote or a handout shall be recorded in a minute.
Doesn't say anything about roll call.
So it doesn't say anything about roll call, there are certain, I know there are certain motions that have to be roll called, but as a general, so.
Yeah, you're, we just, in the group, in the working group, wanted to have our policy reflect our, what we do. And certainly a handbook as well, but our policy now says voice vote. If you want to change that, that's totally easy to do. I've never seen this committee in all of its iterations ever do anything other than roll call, ever. But I've never, that's not the case in a lot of other towns, but who cares? You can decide what you want to do, we just want it to be consistent in the policy with what we actually do.
Looks like we missed that in policy.
Yes, you did. Or.
Noted.
And then the whole board. Again. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, do we want to go into what Chris or I said that we disagree with or? Okay, my feeling on this whole thing about the nomination process, I'm fine with it, but I do think there should be some sort of consideration given to rotation.
What page is this?
It's any, you can pick, page 76, pick any line that you'd like.
Okay.
That the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee rotate positions, they do it in various ways. The Finance Committee, when you're elected as clerk, you're expected to move up the next year to vice chair and then the following year to the chair, that type thing. The Board of Selectmen uses it as a tool for those who are up for reelection. Whoever's up for reelection is automatically the chair and then if there's two, the vice chair, that sort of thing. I have a feel that everybody should have an opportunity to serve in any position before anybody serves it for a second year. Patty seems to think that the chair needs two years to get acclimated to the job. I would disagree with that and that I think the Board of Selectmen is far more encompassing and they step into it for one year and they may just be, they may not even be a vice chair. It just happens to be where, where they're voted electively, elect, where they follow in the electoral cycle is the English sentence on that. So I would like to see something in here that if you have, if someone wants a position and there are three or four people nominated and everybody else has had it, then the person who has not served in that position be given the first opportunity.
So, and I wasn't there for this part, because you started the meeting earlier than I.
Start of the meeting, we started on time.
So I didn't get to.
No, we started.
No, we started.
Started early, oh, that was to avoid him.
So we didn't actually get to have a conversation, I was probably, did talk to Patty about it later on. So I'm kind of in between on both. I don't necessarily agree that we need to keep the same people for an extra amount of years, but I also don't agree that we should have something, you know, making it set in stone that, you know, you, progression, this is the progression, because you just never know. So, you know, you may have a committee member that moves into, you know, the secretary position or vice chair or even chair and turns out to not be very good at that position. Or turns out to miss a lot of meetings or, or, you know, not fulfilling their requirement. But if we have something in a manual or in, in any kind of written stature, then now we have to honor that. And we have to allow that person to move into.
But I would think anybody that thinks, just for example, that they, that they shouldn't be clerk. You know, I'm a terrible clerk and I just don't accept the nomination. I think all of us are adult enough to say that this is not the position for me and I would hold for any of the elected position here, vice chair or chair, that if you don't feel qualified to do the position, that you just don't accept the nomination.
Well, that's leaving it up to that individual.
That's correct.
But what I'm, what I'm getting at is if the entire committee feels that that individual, even though that individual feels that they are willing and qualified for that, if the rest of the committee doesn't feel that way, we're tying our hands saying, well, we don't really have a say because it's written now saying that that person.
Now, how do you know if the person isn't going to be a good vice chair if they don't, aren't given the opportunity to be vice chair? There's, I'm missing something here.
That's why we vote on things because, so we all, all right, we've been on this committee now, at least majority of us, for at least two or three years. All right? So we know each member at least, you know, personality, how they voted, how they are as a committee member. Thankfully, right now, we have a, in my opinion, a very solid, great committee where I wouldn't have any issues with anybody. We all know that, that isn't necessarily the case in the past, it may not be in the future. So if it's, if it's written and then things happen after an individual's on the committee for a couple of years, the committee itself does not have a voice in saying, I don't want that individual being the chair or the vice chair. Because we have no choice on whether or not they're on the committee, because that's voted by the public. But if we don't feel that we want them as a leader representative of the committee, now we don't have a say because we've already put it in the, in the book saying that they are granted and afforded that without any input. You see what I'm saying?
I see what you're saying.
So I'm kind of in between on it, I do agree with rotation is good. And I'm all for it, especially with this particular committee. I just don't, I hesitate putting things in writing without knowing what's coming forward, seeing what we came from.
But if we had something in writing a few years ago, we wouldn't have gotten to the problem that we were in.
Maybe.
But.
That we entered into, however you want to word that. I think you know what I'm referring to.
Having been on three different committees.
Kind of settle.
Yeah, no kidding. You know, while you're correct that the Board of Selectmen tend to rotate now, they didn't always rotate. And that's not a written policy, that's a informal policy by the current.
Accepted practice more.
Group, right? That could change at, at any point. There are other committees here in the town that, that have had the same chairperson for multiple periods. So I think it's always best left up to the committee to make the decision based upon, you know, who the, who is on the current committee and what individuals' desires are. I think the way we structured the nomination process eliminated potentially a bias that could have inhibited someone from being elected or, or participating.
I, I'm not criticizing, I suggest that we change anything about the process that we've elected, I think that works well. I mean nominate and da, 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 and then vote and get it over with. But I, all I'm saying is that there should be some form of rotation that's understood, even if you don't want to put it right.
I agree and understood, like, right, so like Don's saying, in practice, I think. I think it's a good idea to try to afford everyone that opportunity. I hesitate to say we are guaranteeing everyone that opportunity because then that eliminates the voting rights of the committee.
Right, I would agree with that.
But I, I fully agree that, especially with this current committee, that we try to get, if anybody wants to be whatever position at some point within their, their term, that we do whatever we can in our, within our power to allow that to happen. But I just hesitate to put it in writing, I guess that's where I sit, I fall in between.
I understand what you're saying. I, I just think that there should be some sort of, all right, I'll go with understanding if that makes it better, that everybody have an opportunity to serve in whatever position they'd like to. And that it be rotated, because the stagnation gets in if you have the same people doing the same job over and over. And when you have new people in the position, they bring a different light to it. They bring something to it that somebody else may not bring.
Except they have a hard time believing anybody can be better at chair than me.
That's, this could be a great discussion.
At any rate, I want to, if Nicole has anything to say, I want to allow her the opportunity, otherwise if, if anybody has any other thoughts on this, if we could just email it to Patty and then next time we meet, we'll collaborate all of them and try to come up with some kind of, you know, meeting of the minds and then bring it back to the committee.
Okay. Is there something else in there, I don't remember anything else off the top of my head.
Do you have anything, Nicole?
I would just suggest, one, that the working group, if you're trying to make this a comprehensive document, then you should also think about some of the other functions that the committee has to partake in and outline those into this proceed, wow, this guidance.
Are you talking like subcommittees and, and groups?
Say that again, I'm sorry, I missed that statement.
So, so, so for example, one of the things that I noted that wasn't included in here was any instructions in regard to how grievances are handled.
Gotcha.
Right, and so if we are going to make this comprehensive, let's go ahead and include that into the process. There's other things that I think need to be added under the superintendent section. Although I love our current superintendent, maybe someday I don't, 100 years from now. And we don't, we don't outline how that, how that would work for, for a new person coming in who has not had to live through some of that. And knock on wood, that will never happen in my tenure, but since we want to make this a working document, I think you should consider whether or not that is applicable. The, the rest of it, I'll, I'll give you my notes and you can do what you want to do with it.
Thank you.
Nicole, do you have anything?
Sorry.
I'll get my specific comments in. I think to your earlier discussion, I think it's, the thing that would scare me is that the chairman has a, or chairwoman, whoever it is, has a great deal of control in setting the agenda for the meetings. And so I think that position should be elected by the board, it shouldn't be one that's designated automatically because then we surrender a whole lot of, I mean, the agenda is the only thing that we have. So I would, that would be my primary concern, but I, I think ideally, I'd like to see. But I haven't been here long, I've been two chairs, I've known for two years, I don't want to be chair, so I don't really see a problem with it.
I'm sure, I'm honest, it's okay. All right, so does anybody else have anything on that?
We met.
But all are welcome.
When is that?
March 7th, the meeting's at 6:30, I've asked that we put on the ballot, on the ballot, on the agenda first, I'm back in the effectiveness group.
March 7th at what time?
6:30. And also that the capital budget be discussed at the same meeting, because we do have an input on that, now then go showing up two different nights. Other than that, there really wasn't, we're done with the budget process for the current submission and we're getting ready to start the next submission, I guess that's the best way to put it, Paul's already got the words out on that, so.
All right, thank you.
I, I just, I guess I have a question on that, so according to our policy manual.
You said you had something done?
Said according to our policy manual.
Well, the handbook, you're talking.
The handbook.
So if I could just pause you there for a second or two, as we're going forward with that, I want to caution everybody not to turn that into a duplicate policy manual by adding too much information.
So, so I would just point out that we've put in here that 18 months prior to the start of the fiscal year, which is right around now, right? We're supposed to be establishing budget goals and priorities for the following.
That's correct.
Year, so if we need to put that on the.
I would be the working group could.
Agenda for the next meeting to discuss.
Yep.
If that's what we're going to do.
That was one thing we did have on the thing for next year, next meeting.
Is there a next meeting in between now and the next school committee meeting? No?
Well, schedule it, we didn't, because not all the members are there and.
All right, we'll talk about it offline, I guess.
Yeah, and you can do it at the March, isn't it, or March 6th school committee meeting, which is the day before.
But the budget process for the next fiscal year is already starting.
Right, but the committee is.
The committee hasn't put its input, I agree.
Committee hasn't put out any goals or priorities.
That's a good point, I mean, it doesn't hurt to have it on the agenda, that way we can at least kind of, even if we spend a couple of minutes talking about it, that's fine. All right, anything else? All right, we'll move on to new business then, we have a couple tuition waivers.
So I have a letter from a father and he is the father of two students who attend the Coombs School and they recently just moved into Kootuat, but, but we still own our previous property in Mashpee, which makes no difference, but anyway. And he would like to have both of his children remain at Coombs until the end of the school year. And he says we might think about switching schools for them for next year after the summer ends. So he has a kindergarten student and a second grader.
All right, is there a motion to, to approve the tuition waivers for DH and EH?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by George, second by Don. Any discussion? Don?
Hold on, and your motion is tuition waiver for the school year, right?
Tuition waiver for DH and EH for the balance of.
Yes.
I just wanted to.
Yes, that is the motion.
That is the motion, that is correct.
Yes.
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 And yes. All right, next is the FY '20 school committee meeting schedule, which I believe is in the packet. Was it an online packet?
It's right in the packet, the last pages. I have a problem with a couple of the suggested dates.
Sure you?
Oh, I thought this was the second look at these. It wasn't? I thought we already changed the dates.
It was the second, it is the second time you've seen it, the only thing that had gotten changed was February.
Except that February 26th should be 2020, not 2019.
Oh, yeah.
So this does reflect the meetings that we decided to combine.
Right.
But we didn't discuss the dates.
We didn't discuss them, you've seen them.
You've seen them, yeah.
Yes, we've seen them.
So you have some of these you can't make?
That's correct.
Okay, so can we just table the vote on this then?
Uh, we'll postpone it to the next meeting.
What would you like me to do, just tell you what I can't make and then?
Yeah, what you mean, if you know what it is right now, yeah, that'd be great.
I got my appointment right here. July 24th I can't make, I can make the week before.
So you could do the 17th, 17th.
I could do the 17th, yes. August 15th I can't do.
You might lose me if you move it to the 17th.
August 13th.
FYI.
I envy all of you for knowing what your schedule looks like.
I have to, I have to.
It just, it just came up today.
Yeah. Yeah.
But we might be off Cape that week, so.
Okay, well, I can't make the 15th anyway, so.
What about the 19th, the Monday?
18th, 19th I can do.
Of what?
August.
Oh, I thought we were talking about July.
Oh.
No, July, we went the week before, the 17th.
And that's what I said, you would lose me.
Oh, you lose, I'm sorry. I thought you meant.
Yeah, sorry. I was just saying if we move it to the 17th, I'll be gone.
We could do July 10th.
Yeah, we can't do that.
Okay.
Alright, we'll just have to.
Yeah, whatever you decide on, or you'll lose me, whichever.
Yeah, well, we'll see what. Jeff's back for next meeting. If he's good for either date, then we'll go with that one.
Okay. August 17th is, I think, was the suggestion as opposed to the 15th.
No, that's a Saturday.
They said 19th.
August 19th, yes.
Oh, that's a Monday.
A Monday?
Oh, for the retreat.
Retreat.
Oh, so that can be any day.
Yes, that's true. Oh, that says retreat, yeah.
I cannot confirm nor deny anything that's happening in August.
Me neither.
Set the date and I'll work around it.
Next week is up in the air for me.
So do the four of you want to?
Is it possible to do it early, you know, earlier, like the 12th?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
I'm not.
We could do, what about the 14th of August?
I am out of country from the 12th through the 21st of August.
Yeah.
So.
So it'd have to be like the first week of August.
The 21st is another meeting as well.
21st, I can make it. I'd be flying in from Switzerland, but I should be able to be here in time for the meeting, right?
Oh, well, you know, I might be traveling to Portsmouth, so.
Massachusetts, New Hampshire.
So you're saying August 21st, which is a meeting, we're going to leave that one alone?
You can leave, I should be able to make that back. My flight gets in like 2:00 in the afternoon, so.
Are there any other conflicts?
Yes.
For the rest of this?
September 11th.
Okay.
Hold on, before you get there, what about combined, since we're meeting earlier now? Combining it with the July meeting, have the retreat done and have it after the regular meeting?
Because we're going to miss at least one person that night.
George can't do the 21st.
Either George is not going to be there on the 21st or Nicole is not going to be there on the 17th.
Yeah, so it's a good idea, though.
Yeah, we can just make a note of it or whatever and hash it out next meeting because we're not going to vote on it tonight anyway and we want to kind of run it by Jeff as well, so.
I like the idea.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we're talking August 19th, is that correct?
Yeah, tentatively, but so September 11th, you're not going to.
So did you just land on the retreat as a tentative on the 19th?
I think so, yeah. I think that's what we were talking about, the 19th.
Yeah, we'll just, we'll bring it up next meeting and see what the response is at that point.
Yeah. August 21st, I'll be flying in maybe late. Just have my cushions here.
How are you coming in on the 23rd, but you can do the 19th?
I can't do the 19th. We're talking about.
Are you talking about August?
No, now he's in September.
Let's just run down the list of the ones that you will not be able to make.
Okay, August 15th is out and we change that to the 19th, which works.
I thought you said you were flying in, is.
I moved for a brief recess.
That's September.
Alright.
So we're putting the retreat at the 19th.
At the 19th.
Skylar's like, that's it, I'm done. I'm out. Skylar out.
Thanks, sorry, Skylar.
I think it'd probably be more productive if you just submit and.
Well, and that's just, before we move on, all I want is a yes or no on each date that's going to be good for you. That's it.
Just from Gail's perspective, if she's trying to do five of you with this, it's going to come in handy.
Alright, go for it.
Is it just, so I can check it off. September 11th is no good for you. October 16th is? Yes, hopefully.
Where are we? I'm sorry.
Just go right down the list, whatever day it says.
October should be okay.
Without rescheduling them or anything, just yes or no.
September, October's, October 16th is fine.
Yep, November 13th?
I am making a presentation. I don't know when it's going to be.
In November?
In November.
Okay, so a question mark. December?
December.
Wow.
I will grace you with my presence.
January 8th?
January, let me get my new book.
We're talking about 11 months from now? You've got something going?
I do taxes. I pre-book people.
That's true, that's right.
Jeez.
I just hope I'm alive in 11 months.
Okay, January, January, I'm sorry, January 7th is fine.
It's January 8th.
January 8th is fine. January 22nd, I can do.
February 26th.
February 26th. I haven't booked people yet, so this should be. February 26th, I can keep that open, okay. March 18th.
I already have that one on the calendar.
That should be okay. I can change that. March, May 13th.
No, did you do April 8th?
April 8th. I can, it's early enough in advance, so these during tax season, I can adjust it, so.
So the rest of them should be hopefully good?
So we're going to go with the rest of it.
Yeah, the only one I'm not sure of is like May 27th and June 10th. I don't know what's happening that far out, so.
Alright, and then we'll discuss it further next meeting.
Well, that's reassuring, George.
Because I think, where did we land with?
I was just starting to get worried.
Yeah, so we'll discuss it next meeting once Jeff's here and figure out all those dates. Alright, so I need, I need a motion to postpone the vote on.
So moved.
I second it.
Sorry, guys, but.
So the motion is to postpone the vote on the FY20 school committee meeting schedule.
And I think we have to say when we're going to postpone to, yeah, to the next meeting.
To the next meeting of, when is our next meeting?
It's March 6th.
March 6th.
You got that, Kathy?
I do.
So that is motion by George. Second by Nicole. Right, Don?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Alright, thank you.
Okay, so there's a request from Patty Riley, who is the advisor for the key club and they are going to the district convention. There's, I think it's not nine kids anymore, I think it's six kids. And Mrs. Riley will go and we need permission because it's an oath. They would stay overnight at this convention and it's not an athletic event. It says nine there, but it got changed back to six.
Oh, okay.
It started at four and then it went to nine and now it's six.
Alright.
That's fine.
Alright, I'm moving to approve this request.
Second.
Alright, the motion to approve the overnight Kiwanis Key Club field trip to Springfield, Mass. by Nicole, second by George. Any discussion? Don?
Yes.
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 They have a nice playground in Springfield. Nice big park.
They have all of our old F-15s out there in Springfield.
Sorry.
Alright, so. There is?
Yeah.
Uh, Skylar?
Point Patty.
Oh, yes, thank you. Oh, yeah, the checkmark next to us, I guess we're going to do it. Alright, so we do need, if you remember, we had talked about the CIP committee a few meetings back. Apparently we never officially voted to appoint Patty as the voting member of the CIP committee. So we'll need a motion to do so tonight.
Make a motion that we appoint Patty DeBoer as the voting representative on the CIP committee from the school committee.
Alright, motion by Don. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Nicole. Any other comments, discussion? Don?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. Now we can move on. And I believe, I believe that's pretty much it. So if we have any, anybody has anything else that was, we were not aware of before the meeting?
I just have two, well, more agenda items for next time. I think we should have an update on the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe partnership. Seems like it's been a while and we're going to be preparing for that. Are we still doing the June meeting at the tribe? Is that the plan?
Yes, that's.
I don't know, I just really want a status update. I felt like we haven't heard about it in a while.
Well, we can share some of the things that have happened.
Yeah, I mean, it's really just, because you guys have that nice, long to-do list and I'm just curious how many more things have happened, you know, in that, since then. But I'll leave it to you whether it should be on March or April. I just thought March was good because June will be there. And then I think, taking a cue from Don last time, I think we'll need an executive session at the next meeting. Because I think we have two more Unit C meetings between now and the next school committee meeting. So we'll probably have a little bit more to report, update you guys on.
Okay, similar, you think similar timeframe from now, like the 15 minutes or so of it?
We'll know closer. I think we'll know whether, because we might need to seek your input, George. On, on, you know, any decisions or something, right? Possible.
Yeah.
Sounds good. Just, yeah, email, email myself a Patty order and both of us, let us know.
Okay.
You're going to need it.
Well, she'll know.
Oh, yeah, she'll know. I won't.
I'm going to include for next, for the March meeting as well, the final report out on start time and how everything's been ironed out.
Oh, yeah.
And we can start making sure that gets communicated. I think you're supposed to have the draft scheduled in February.
I have, I'm working on it, so hopefully, the latest would be like the first year or something like that. It's going to be very close.
And are they building that based on people moving ahead one year like they.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay. And one other quick thing about the legislative breakfast, which is Friday. Did everyone who's going make sure you RSVP? There was an email.
I think, is it just Don and I?
I can't make it.
I will not.
I can't make it.
Oh, I responded to her.
Andrew and Patty.
Okay.
The call came today just to bear security.
Huh, alright, well, I'll send a note. Yeah.
Anything else?
Just one quick thing. The Mashpee Substance Abuse Task Force will be changing its location from the library back to the Community Health Center starting in the April 2nd, I believe is the date. General consensus was is that the, while the library is a nice facility and all of a sudden, that sort of thing, it didn't provide appropriate cover for somebody that was seeking assistance. And hasn't been in the library in 42 years and all of a sudden expresses an interest, whereas the Community Health Center, they can go for a toenail hangout or something. So that's why we headed back there. And with that, I move to return, Mr. Chairman.
First, I want to check to make sure Dr. Hanscom is all set. Do you have anything?
Really? Well, no.
And we don't have any other comment, public comment, so yes, we have a motion to adjourn from George?
Second.
Thanks.
I slept for a little bit.
Oh, no, we're supposed to just.
Alright.
Do we really want to do this?
Discussion, you're kidding.
I can't decide.
How do you vote?
I'm thinking. It's a lot of pressure. Yes.
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 Oh, I was gonna, I'll say yes.
Okay.
You already have a pre.